Good morning, everyone. It's 9:00 a.m. I know Mark's speaking to a lady there, but we'll keep started on with the work session here. Public comment, I think we have the sheriff's office here. I don't know who's going to speak. Sheriff, if you don't mind, step right up here, please.
We'll let you go longer.
Good morning. How are you?
I appreciate that. So, I'm good. How are you all doing?
Doing great.
So, we're just here. I know the jail medical has been something we've been talking about. We've reached out to a couple of different places and we've got a contract we'd like to propose to y'all from Turnkey. I know y'all were concerned about the cost plus. This is not a cost plus. It's a fixed cost thing, so to answer that side of it. But it is going to be a little bit more. Obviously, we're asking for 24/7 medical help. Turnkey, I've spoke with the current provider that we have and asked them what their fix was for the lack of staffing. They didn't have one. They tell me they can't afford nurses. To me, the common sense way to fix that is to provide more money for your staffing. If you can't compete with the local hospitals and the local medical and you can't get it staffed, then it's your duty to raise your staffing pay to provide for the contract that you've agreed to. Turnkey has done that, so you noticed that. But I really don't know what else. If y'all have questions on it, I think we've brought a copy of the contract with us to give to y'all to review. I know you can't answer it right now, but it's really just to get the ball rolling. I understand this is the next step on it, so.
Yeah, I told the attorney about it. He's going to review the contract. We'll go from there.
I would ask while you're reviewing that, it's something the chairman and I have talked about. I don't know if there'll be a clause in there, but if they're not able to provide their staffing, that there's some kind of the way, he phrased it, a clawback. Currently, we pay whether we get staffed or not. There's no reimbursement for the nurses not being there. The county's just out the money. So, we'd ask that when that discussion, we have some kind of clawback. If it comes up, we don't have staffing, that we're not just out the money just simply because they can't do it. I think that'll hold their feet to the fire as far as providing the staffing also. So, is there anything else, Tammy, that I forgot? Justin, y'all have any questions about any of it?
How often is that they don't have a no-show?
Frequently. Currently, it's very frequently, yes, sir. Our, well, frequently. We'll just leave it there.
Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday, we didn't have anybody was the most recent time, but it's very frequent.
And that's when you probably got four or five. They probably pick up on that and you got four or five women go to the doctor then.
There's, yeah, they've told me. I spoke like directly to the company and they tell me it's a wage they can't compete. And I said, well, why don't you just raise your wages and include it into the contract? That would seem like a simple fix. And they told me they weren't willing to do that. So, to continue to go with them, they're already acknowledging that they're not going to be able to fulfill their contract. And I don't know who would want to do business with the company that's not willing to do what needs to be done. So, that's why we are seeking out. We've sought out many different options. We've reached out to many different healthcare providers, different facilities. And currently, this looks like the best route for us to try at least a one-year contract. And then at the end of that year, if it's not, we can start seeking other options for sure. So, that is it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anybody have any more questions for the sheriff? He runs off. All right. Thank you, sir. Ellen, do we have any more public comments?
Yes, Tammy Parvin.
Tammy, if you don't mind, step over to the microphone, please. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning. Good. How are you? I had received notification in the mail about a subdivided mini subdivision. And I live at the end of Bluebird Lane. And I want to address the safety concerns with the number of residents already coming in and down the road on Bluebird, coming off of 72 onto Bluebird and coming off Bluebird onto 72. It's from a safety standpoint with the number of residents we have now and then with the potential future development that there are plans for. We have a one-lane road coming in and out of there. So, one car will come down at one time.
Did you speak with Mark before?
We can speak further.
Between the meeting and they'll speak further between the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have any more?
Yes. Judge Woodruff?
Judge Woodruff, if you don't mind, step up to the mic, please.
Never done it, so I didn't get it in in time. But we've had like five things break in our office since budget request and budget matters. And because of that, despite crunching numbers to try to do things by year end, I'm asking that line 849 miscellaneous furniture in the probate budget for next year be increased 2390 to go from 4110 to 6500. So, it's an increase of $2,390 to a total of 6,500 line 849 miscellaneous furniture.
So, that's for next year's?
For next year's budget.
You got with Emily on that?
I had just, just now, yes. Because I was told be here for those and.
Which we will not vote on the budget until next week.
I know. I'm just making it now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Judge. Have a good day. Have any more, Ellen?
Yes, Sandy Smith?
Sandy, if you don't mind, step up to the mic, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, only thing that we have, when we did the budget request in July, we decreased the temporary help from 6,000 to 3,000. And I was asking that we be allowed maybe to use that for a supplement increase in our pay raise. And I would like your opinions on that, the commissioners, if they feel that's a thing they can do or they're against it.
I don't, if you're asking all of us for answer, I don't know what we can and what we can't do. It'd have to be that we just had to look at it and see if it's, if it's a way that can be done. I wouldn't have a problem with it since it's already budgeted. But if we can't use that money for that, it'd be a definite no because it'd be a legal reason, not, not a personal reason or a judgmental reason for us.
But it goes, but by being a decrease from last year, it goes back into the general fund, right? Is that where it goes back?
I wouldn't be able to answer that either because it's, because it hasn't, we haven't passed the budget yet. So, that would be.
They would just go to a different, a different area in the budget. But the legal question of that is, we couldn't answer that sitting here today because that would be polling like a corn. We can't tell you whether or not we could or couldn't do that sitting here today.
But I understand that. I just, I mean, I just wondered if that, since it was a decrease and not an increase in temporary help, that we won't need it next year because there's not an election next year. So, we don't need the temporary help as much. We will need her, but not, not for the amount that's on there. So, that was my, that was my request.
Okay. We'll take that request under advisement and get with attorney on that and go from there. Thank you, Sandy. All right. Ellen, we have any more?
Lynn Helms?
Lynn, if you don't mind, step up to the microphone, please. How you doing this morning, Lynn?
I'm fine. Can I ask?
Yes, sir. You sure can.
With help that keeps us focused on what we're doing. This is a map that shows the intersection of Morrisville Road and Nick Davis Road. And I'm addressing the potential problems, potential surface water runoff problems and how it would affect roads, bridges, and the cost of upkeep. What the map that you have is developed from a 2016 R.G.I.S. info. And you'll see a hill there with circles with the contours around there. And you'll see, looking at the contours, you'll see that the water drains, the surface water drains primarily to the north toward Nick Davis, where it runs to the east then down to, to the creek. There's some water that runs to the east off the hill. Some water runs to the west. But for the lot that's there that's shown, most of the land on the west side drains to the north toward Nick Davis. Since then, that's been, there's been a mini storage put in there. The drainage at the mini storage is from about halfway down the open area that you're seeing, there has been a gradient put in to drain that to Nick Davis, which gives you about two-thirds or about a third of what was going there, a third to a half of the water that was going to Nick Davis. And the, and the south end of that area, there is now a huge pit with a one-point drain once the water reaches to a certain point. So, what you have is a point discharge on the south end. But at the north end at Nick Davis, you have two or three discharge points that runs to the creek. The point discharge goes into trees, which is not grass-covered areas. If you notice the soils from the soil survey, and you'll see the address for the web soil survey on the back, that tells you that those are erodible soils. So, with the point discharge at one point as opposed to having, as it was originally, a discharge to the east-west and then primarily to the north to Nick Davis, you have erosion, potential erosion developing. You have a lot of soils washing down into the creek. That creek moves southwest over to Morrisville Road. And there's a bridge at that point that will cause that creek to silt up. When it silts up and the water starts rising, the water is, the creek's going to spread out. When it does that, you're going to run into a problem, a maintenance problem on trying to keep the, that bridge from going underwater or keep water from going across the road. And I thought that since this is a fairly new development, if it is addressed now, when you can still change the gradient in the, in that mini storage area to make it flow more to the north, that it might save you, save the county a lot of money down the road because when you have flood problems, you've got to deal with it right then, whether you've got money or not. But if you deal with it now, at the construction end of it, at the beginning of it, you can do that. And this is probably going to be common with all the construction going on in Limestone County. Someone to look at this, the point discharge that is there existing now at the south end is good for an urban area. But for a rural area, point discharge is, is not a good way to go. I'm a registered geologist in state of Alabama. I've spent 32 years or so as a geotechnical engineer. And so, I'm not talking, just talking off the wall.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Ellen?
No further comments.
All right. Thank you all. Thank everybody for the public comment. Thank everybody for being here today. Moving on, we'll get into the work session. I'll put on my glasses where I can see. We'll have on for the day's approval, we'll have the minutes from August 15th of 2022. Does anybody have any discussion with the minutes? All right. No discussion with the minutes. We'll have claims and amount of $2,574,846.41. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right. Next thing, we'll have a resolutions orders. We'll have approval for a resolution appointing Limestone County Commission as a physical agent on behalf of the Athens-Limestone Community Associations to make a application for the utilization of funds and resources of the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs FY-23 recreational trails program in order to create an ADE-compliant crush-and-run trail that outlines Fort Henderson, which this is Richard Martin's project. He's been working on for several years. It was originally called the Fat Man Diabetic Walking Trail. I think he named it for me. So, anybody got any discussion with that? All right. So, no more discussion?
I got a quick question.
Yeah.
It says ADA compliant, but then it says crush or ruin. What?
That's, yeah, that don't add up.
I mean, if it's wet and there's a wheelchair going down through there, that's not going to work.
There's no, Morale Engineering is doing the project. It's, you know how they do it.
It's probably ADA compliant based on the grades and those kinds of things.
Okay. All right.
I mean, my guess is that, my guess, I've never seen the plans, but they'd have to have some drainage and things in to keep you from having washed location.
Okay, that's why.
If you're using something like crush-and-run as your, your surface, I mean, there's some precautions you'd have to put in place.
Okay.
It could be done, but it's just, but I haven't seen the plans. But, but my guess is the grading and things are what's, what they're.
Okay. All right.
ADA compliance.
All right. Thanks.
I know we'll discuss about it. It's Richard and they have to go through a county agency to get the grant. And I know Morale's doing the project for them. So, that's, that's as far as that question. Any more discussion? All right. Number two on here be to approve resolution to provide uniforms and clothing to certain county employees to ensure safety and identification and to otherwise unable employees to perform their job duties. So, anybody got any discussion with this? All right. Next thing on here, contracts, agreements, and grants. Be to approve a MOU concerning the rave alert, Limestone County and the Athens-Limestone County Emergency Communications District. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right. Next on here to be approve another MOU between Family Life Centers and the, and the Limestone County Commission, in which funds in the amount of $15,000 are to be approved to the Family Life Center for a period between October the 1st, 2022, and October the 30th, '23. This is just one of those things we do every year, just to re-approve it. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right. Next thing on here will be to approve the two following contracts, contracts. First one, Senior RX. It's a contract with, which said contract supplies Limestone County Commission slash councilman agent funds in the amount of $20,848. And this is from October 1st, 2022 through September the 30th, '23. And the other one's aging contract, which said contract supplies Limestone County slash COA funds in the amount of $129,530. This is October the 1st of '22 through September the 30th, '23. This is just the, every year improvement of contracts. Anybody got a discussion with either one of those? All right. Next thing on here will be to approve a grant between the Alabama Department of Youth Services and the Limestone County Commission with the Limestone County Community, Limestone County Commission being the recipient of the funds in the amount of $49,756 for the fiscal year of '22 and '23. This is another one of those things we do every year. And I think this is for the youth service bid, isn't it? And aren't you on that board, Jason?
I am.
I was thinking that's what it was for. All right. Anybody got a discussion with that? And next thing is to approve the following solid waste increases. And this is for the garbage pickup in Limestone County. The first one to be for $1490 to CCS garbage due to fuel escalation for the month of September of 2022. And the second part of it will be for $1502 to CPNI. This is where the dumping fee will go up next month for the increase in tipping fees for the October of '22 until the end of the contract in March of '23. And then the next one would be for a household increase of $18, to $218 per month for garbage effective October of '22. Anybody got any discussion with any of these things?
When was the last, last increase, Mr. Chairman? Been at least five years?
Well, as far as in the monthly to the customer, it's been years and years. But I don't know when the last one was. It's been several, several, 10 years plus, I think.
It's at least 10 years?
Yeah, it was past. I think it was.
It's at least five, sure enough.
And we, but we do this, now, we do do the CPNI. It increases every so many months.
Right. To the customer.
To the customer. Yes, that's right. And, you know, of course, in the contract, it does escalate. It has fuel escalation cost in the contract. And we have kind of put this down, you know, trying to get this figured out. And it's been several months in the making here. But everybody knows that fuel has escalated astronomical. So, and I don't really see how Steve Gatlin has continued to keep on the service at the rate he's kept it on to for the, what he's been charging. So, that's where we're at with it. Anybody got any discussion? All right. And then we have several budget revisions, which I'll just, I mean, if you want me to read through them or y'all look at them on the paper there. But it's, we've got a board of registers for postage for $12,000. We've got the veterans for R&amp;M Building, 6200. Then we got a District 1, District 2, District 3, and District 4. All have a budget revision. Engineering has a health insurance and postage for, I know postage has went up too. Mental health building for, and then we have the Prior Street Building, Extension Office Building, the jail, the Clinton Street Building, the EMA, the COA, the archives, and the Rebuild Alabama Fund. So, anybody got any discussion with any one of these budget revisions? We'll single them out. I know it's just the end of the year and we're trying to, I know the fuel costs have been, and all that has been a real big cost in all of our budgets. Anybody got a discussion with any budget revision? All right. No, we'll move on to emergency purchase. We have none. Board appointments, we have none. Award bids. We have one bid to award. It's for business cards for the county commission for printers and stationery. It's for $57.99. Anybody got a discussion with that bid? All right. Personnel action. We've got several. First one on here will be to approve to transfer Gary "Rip" McNatt from patrol lieutenant to patrol captain effective 9/6/22. Anybody got a discussion? All right. Next one on here be to approve to transfer Corey James Crouch from corrections officer to patrol deputy effective 9/6/22. Anybody got a discussion with that? And number three here, to approve to hire Vadim Shushant, Shushants, as a patrol deputy effective 9/6/22 pending a drug screening. Anybody got a discussion with him?
What was his name?
Vadim Shushants.
Got it.
It sounds good to me. I apologize to Vadim in advance.
That's a tough one.
Is that, is that correct, Sheriff?
We'll just call him Deputy. Hey, Deputy.
And, you know, I met him the other day and he said he was from Wyoming. I don't know about that.
Yeah.
So, Vadim Shushants. So, we'll go with that name. All right. Approve to hire Kelly Ann Noel as a communications officer effective 9/6/22 pending a drug screening. All right. Number six, to approve to promote Spencer Wimbrew from commitment operator 1 to equipment operator 2 in District 2 effective 9/6/22. Anybody got a discussion with him? Approve to hire Jeffrey Allen Burke as a part-time school resource officer effective 9/7/22 pending a drug screening. Anybody got a discussion with him? Approve to hire Brian OZR as a full-time school resource officer. And that'd be retroactive 8/8/22 pending a drug screening. Anybody got a discussion with that? And approve to hire Tangela Harris-Lig as a, as a communications officer effective 9/16/22 pending a drug screening. Anybody got a discussion with her? Approve to amend a staffing plan to reflect eight full-time school resource officers, grade 16, and to reflect nine part-time school resource officers, grade 11. And I'll explain. The reason for this is, is the, is through the labor act, the waiver act, that if you work over so many hours and Brian OZR was working part-time but working full-time hours, so we had to amend that to, to offer the benefits to his. So, anybody got a discussion with that? All right. Number 11 will be to promote, to promote Dennis Wallace from equipment operator 3 in District 1 to road supervisor effective 9/6/22. Anybody got a discussion with Dennis?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to put a word in here. My foreman, Chris Davis, after 34 years, decided to retire. So, that's who this is replacing. Chris has always been a really faithful employee, always done the county a good job. And I hate to see him go. But I had, we put out for the job, had seven applicants apply for it, seven good applicants. And Dennis, Dennis has been willing to step up and, and kind of cover, you know, while, while Chris has been out. So, so Dennis is definitely my choice for that position. But we're really going to miss Chris and.
Yeah, I know he's had some issues and I hope he, everything goes well for him. He's a, he's a good guy.
We hope he enjoys his retirement.
I do, too.
And spends time with the grandbabies. That's what he loved doing.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
And I piggyback off that. I want to thank Chris for his service at the county. Like I said, you know, it's, when you have an employee worth 30-something years for you, he's been a valuable asset to the county over the years. And I know Chris had some health issues. And let's pray for his, go through all this well and hope he enjoys with his grandkids. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. And moving on, anybody got anything else there? Moving on will be to, number 12 will be to approve unpaid leave of absence for Marcia Pratt beginning August of '22, of '22, and ending September the 9th of '22. And I'll just go on to the next one and we'll discuss it. Second will be to approve unpaid leave of absence for Kevin Falkerson, beginning August the 1st of '22 and ending August the 1st of '22. I know that Kevin's had some health issues and through this, his wife has had some health issues. And he, we're just approving for him. And the other one, I can't really speak on Ms. Pratt's part. But anybody got a discussion with either one of them? Biggest thing is just pray for both of them, fast healing and a speedy recovery. All right. No discussion with either one of those. I'll move on to number 14, be approved to the job description for a county attorney. And anybody got a discussion with that? All righty. And moving on, we've got several merit increases listed here. Anybody got issue with anybody on the merit, merit increase besides Mark Massey?
Not Marcus. Marcus.
Marcus. Well, he, he came flying in here. He took Mark Macklin's place of getting in here on time this morning. So, anyhow, anybody got a discussion with anybody on there? All right. No discussion with nobody. We'll move on to the engineer's report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got several subdivisions for your consideration today. Bluebird Estates, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District 2. This is the one that was brought up in the public comment. And I will speak with them further. I apologize. I didn't have time to speak with them before the meeting. McFarland subdivision, minor for preliminary and final, creating four lots in District 1. Jeffrey Estates, this is a replat of tract Q. This is a minor for preliminary and final, creating one lot in District 1. Wright Road subdivision, this is a replat of Lot 1. This is a minor, preliminary and final, creating two lots in District 3. Three Roads subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District 4. And then Casey Linn Estates, Phase 2, this is major for final approval, creating 21 lots in District 4.
Anybody got a discussion with anybody? Any, I mean, any of the subdivisions?
I'm grateful Ladon is leading the pack on this one.
Ladon led the pack on this one today. 23 lots, Ladon. It's unusual for you to lead the pack. All right. Anybody got any more discussion? You got anything else, Mark?
I did check into, I know that Jason had mentioned in the last meeting, the idea of possibly looking into property for a facility for a new engineering office. I did reach out to the property owner that you had mentioned and discussed with them. And I also discuss, also reached out about costs for environmental reviews and appraisals. About $25,000 would be the cost of environmental reviews and appraisals. So, I don't, just bringing that to you guys' attention since Jason brought it out in the last meeting. And so, y'all let me know how you want us to proceed. But those, that $25,000 cost would be incurred if we, if you did decide to proceed with, with anything further. So, and that'd be similar whether, any property that you chose.
I would favor the environmental study.
I would do.
And that, I went ahead and got a price for Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1 is just essentially a historic survey, just to find out what activities may have taken place on site. Phase 2 would be if they find something in the historical records that show that there could potentially be contamination, that they would actually do the drilling and everything to determine to what extent there might be contamination. So, so that, that kind of gets us through both phases included in that. So, that's not just, this is just a Phase 1.
Thank you for doing it.
Wonder if one of these studies can figure out. It's been three generations live in the same spot I live. I wonder what can, what they can find there.
There's lots of problems up there where you're at.
I'm a third generation on that piece of property. There might be a.
But, but that's, the striping.
Check the water first.
The striping crew is operating, with the weather today, they're not operating. The striping crew has been operating the last couple of weeks. And there's been, there's been a lot of ground gained. So, when you're out and about, if you notice anything. But I do feel like they've got enough confidence in what they're doing now to where, if you have any specific locations, any specific roads that, that are more of a trouble area that you'd like to see something taken care of, go ahead and get that, get us that, those locations. Because they do have enough, I feel like they've got enough confidence and experience now to where they can go approach some specific roads instead of us trying to handpick some that are, that we feel comfortable with. So, if you, like I said, if you have any specific locations that, that you'd like to see something done, let us know.
Well, the, the most recent road they did in my district was Davis Road. And a lot of people from church were bragging that they could see it during the day much better and at night way, way better. So.
Yeah, we did. We completed Wright Road and we did a portion of Davis. We ran out of one of the beads. And so, we stopped at, at Holt Springer, I believe. And so, we've got to pick up there and carry it to the rest of the way to 72, just as soon as the weather permits. But, but that, that, Wright and Davis were the two most recent.
It looks great. Thank you.
At 4:56 this morning, when I was waiting on to turn the lights on at the cafe, Jimmy Bailey was bragging on our striping crew, said that on his way in, it was foggy this morning. And that's where I get my local constituent reports at Eagles Diner this morning, you know. And so, anyhow, he said that he was bragging on how much better it was in the fog. So.
It is. It's much better. It is, it's much better, and hopefully, I mean, hopefully, we're able to, to keep the momentum. I mean, like I said, I do feel like they're comfortable enough to where they can, to where they can do any project that you kind of have that's in a troubled area. So, feel free to, to kind of give us a list of areas that you think are troubled areas. Otherwise, we'll continue operating the way we have, kind of rotating through the districts and just working our way out through the districts. So, like I said, we will continue operating that way, but if you have any troubled spots, let us know.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody got anything else from Mark? Moving on, other business, we have approve of bond amount increase in the following due to the increases in taxes collected, and both of these will be the Joseph Cannon's license commission, his increase from 75 to 150, which a bond approximately cost $341. And Brian Patterson's revenues increases from 75 to 300,000, and this is approximate bond cost of $975. Anybody got any, any discussion with any one of those bonds? All right, and then moving on to, will be approving to amend the Limestone County Safety Committee list, and this is just where somebody rolled off, rolled on, this is through E M A, Eddie does this. So, anybody got a discussion with that? And then number three will be to approve to authorize Ellen Morrell to approve department budget revisions as necessary for the end of the year. Anybody got a discussion with that? This is something we do every year, so we don't have to get it approved. All right, so no schedule public king, our executive assistants, report of officers, Commissioner Sammet?
I don't have anything this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barksdale?
District Two's trying to get finished bushhogging with the second round of bushhogging. We've got some striped roads that really look good. Our paving crew is, looks outstanding to me. It really adds to a road even if you don't do any surface improvement. Couple of weeks, our paving crew will be back out on Morrisville Road and Southern Heritage and Newby Road. So, I've just asked that y'all drive cautiously around them. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Black?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Townsend?
I don't have anything.
All right, I've got a couple of things here, just to run through quick. It's Gynecological Cancer Month, I'm wearing my tilt-high for that. So, we, we went on a proclamation that with the city the other day, and I know they, we do that every year, and if you have anybody, screening's a big thing with that. It's also Blood Cancer Awareness and Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, so, you know, everybody, I know everybody has somebody in their life that's been affected by cancer, so I know early detection most times your thing. And it's also National Square Dance Month and Chicken Month, so I know we've got a chicken farmer in here, we don't know who the square dancer is of the bunch, so. But no, and another serious note is, and I had a constituent reach out to me, wanted me to mention this. This week is September the 5th through the 11th, I believe it is, let me make sure, through the 11th, is Suicide Awareness Month. I know everybody has had somebody in their life that has committed suicide along the way, so had a constituent reach out to me for that, wanted me to warn everybody, you know, if you have anybody, loved ones, please try to work with them and try to help them through it because that's not the answer, please. So, with all that said, we will adjourn until recess until 10 a.m. right here. Thank y'all. Thank you for being here.